Hello and welcome to the MC. My name's Ed McCarthy and I am here with Reading City Council member Michael DeCristo. He is willing to be one of our voices of the North State to talk about the recent economic relief package that was put together by the Reading City Council. Mr. DeCristo, welcome.
Good afternoon, Ed. Thank you very much. I appreciate you having me here today.
Is it okay if I call you Michael? And where, how, how are you addressing the stay at home order? And what's your life like today? What do you, what's your life like these days?
Calling me Michael is fine. Calling me Mr. DeCristo reminds me of my father. It makes me feel old. We have, my wife and I have, I've worked at home essentially for the last two or three years. So it's not my daily activity and what I do, other than the city council business is, I'm able to do that at home and my wife has been, she raised her kids and didn't work other than, that's a lot of work, but she didn't work outside the house to speak of, and she helps him with my business. So it's, it's been okay. It's, um, it's, it's just different. If you think about it in our daily lives, it's the first serious call to arms. It's a little bit like September 11th in a sense of the country, you're nice, but it's, it's something that's happened where they're asking you to do something to stay home. You know, the last time they asked somebody to do something seriously was when they had the wars, they had Vietnam War, Korean War, World War One, World War Two. And so in that sense, there's no comparison. If you ask somebody to stay at home for a while as opposed to going off and fighting for your country, um, the consequences can be a lot worse and a lot different. So in that sense, I wish it would end.
Yeah, it would be nice. It'd be nice when it's over, but it is, you know, it is definitely a small sacrifice for me and my family to stay home. I know there's a lot of people out there who are making bigger sacrifices when they're, you know, they, they can't work or the people who have been laid off. So, so that was, you know, why it's great that the, uh, the city of Reading passed a bit of an economic relief package. So the thing that got me thinking about this was the KRCR pass had a, a news story. It was called Relief for Reading: Understanding Your Economic Relief Plan. And it talked a little bit about how it's $37.5 million, which comes out to about $400 per person. I assume I'm not getting a check for $400, right?
Not for me.
Well, we'll see. People make you look good during this and then maybe, but, um, yeah.
You get a credit on your utility bill for 50 bucks earlier you got and that you should have it and then another 200. So in that sense, you're, you're getting some, but you're not getting a check.
Good deal. So that I did see the $50 credit in my last RU bill. Appreciate that. So $200 credit per person and says that low income taxpayers get $300, which seems pretty healthy. I know my RU bill for water and for garbage and sewer and everything else is usually less than $200. So this should cover, you know, at least a month and for people in apartments. And so this might cover all of the, the utilities for a couple of months for folks. Does that sound about right?
We're hopeful that it will. The, the, the impetus behind it, going back up a little bit, most of the money is coming from the Reading Electric Utility. And many of the viewers of this may already understand this, but for the, to start at the beginning, the, there's two kinds of utility companies. There's privately owned where you can buy stock in them like Pacific Gas and Electric or San Diego Gas and Electric, and they may pay dividends. And they're, they have obligations to their shareholders and to their customers. Then there are municipally owned utilities, which is like Reading Electric Utility and there are other cities in California that have their own utility. And those utilities don't have the equivalent of stockholders. They have the ratepayers who are their, essentially their stockholders. So you don't normally give them dividends like you would in a, in the privately owned one or the publicly owned one, I mean. But you give them other benefits and there's other things. So that's what it is. And it allows, because they're not investor owned, but they're owned by the citizens, the Reading Electric Utility is run by the city council. So, so we essentially have two hats on the city council. One is we're in charge of the Reading Electric Utility and its financial decisions. And then we're in charge of the city and its general fund and all the other funds, utility funds and whatnot and those decisions. So we have two hats that we wear.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that. That's a good advantage of having a publicly owned utility like that, that in times of crisis like this, you know, we own them, you know, they're, they're there to benefit us. And this is definitely one of the ways that they can have a benefit for the, the citizens of Reading.
That's true. And it's, it's, uh, it's a mixed bag. There could be times where you say it's really the ratepayers money who aren't technically the same as the citizens. For the most part they are, but you know, if you live in Palisade Row and you own a business in Reading and you pay the utilities, you're a ratepayer, but you're not a citizen, a voting citizen in that sense. But, but it is a good thing to have that there. And it, and it's been very beneficial for the city to be able to, to have those funds and to use that. So then the other, the background information, because people are going to say, well, I mean, my first thought was where do we get $37 million or $35 million? How does it magically show up and it doesn't come from the general fund?
Yes, I was thinking that same thing. And from what I'm reading here, it's $20 million came from RU. So of that 37 million, 20 million of it was this RU $200 to $300 rebate for folks. Yeah. Do you want to talk about how that was? I see that 10 million already came from greenhouse gas credits. And then where did the other 10 million come from? Greenhouse gas credits?
I think they're, so let me, let me explain what greenhouse gas credits are because that's another, it's confusing to say the least. So in, I think in simple terms, as I understand it, the state of California imposes pollution guidelines or, or limits on different industries, utilities, uh, gas and oil, things like that, trucking. And if you have a, an industry that emits less than the state says you should emit, you get a credit. And you can sell that credit to a polluter who can't meet the state's requirements. And the state says, well, if, if you, if you're a polluter, these are my terms, not the law's terms, but if you're a polluter and you, and you want to lower to get within our limit, we'll let you buy credits from somebody who's very good and efficient and, and environmentally sound and is lower than our credit. So what happens is the utility has credits that they can sell on the open market. And that's the source of the money. And I, I call it greenhouse gas money for lack of a, just as a phrase to cover it.
Yeah.
And that's from.
It makes a lot of sense. I remember studying this in economics in college, the idea of, you know, cap and trade and, you know, you set the total amount that you want from everybody. And some people can easily lower their, their emissions and other people, it's very difficult. So here in Reading, I know that RU, the majority of the energy that they produce comes from, uh, clean sources, from solar, from wind, from, um, uh, big hydro. So there's only a small percentage that comes from anything that emits CO2. So I could see why we would have a lot of credits. So then they sold those to some other, some other area that is on more of a.
Yeah. In an open market, they sell it. And I'm not sure if it's a silent auction or a sealed auction, but they sell it and they get credit back for it. And then the law has limits on what you can use that credit for. And each council gets to decide as part of the yearly or the twice every two year budget, how they want to spend the money and what they want to do with it. Turns out, one of the things that you can do with these credits is you can give direct funds back to the ratepayers. Now, so my first thought when I found all this money is, well, where did it all come from? How come it wasn't given back to the ratepayers? So in one sense, you could say, well, it should have been given back earlier. But in another sense, you can say, if we'd given it back earlier, we wouldn't have it now when people really need it. So it's a mixed bag. But that's really how it works.
So that's, that's 10 million of it. Do you know what the other 10 million was?
I think it's closer to, I think the greenhouse gas is closer to 20, but some of the, if you actually look at the numbers, and I have to look at my little cheat sheet here. There, there was, I'll go through each one. There was, there was a small one. Haven Humane charged some money if you, um, if your pet was picked up and you had to pick it up. So they couldn't, they stopped charging that. That's a couple hundred bucks. Um, late fees and interest on sitting of, city of Reading payments. So if you owe the city money for something, I think separate from your utility bill and you didn't pay it on time, they would charge you late fees or interest. They suspended that. That's 60 grand. They suspended utility shut offs, which would increase the cash flow of the person whose utility was going to be shut off, assuming they have cash flow. That's an unknown amount. They suspended utility late fees, which they estimated $425,000. Now, whether they're going to get those back later on, or whether they're going to wind up waiting or what's going to happen, but they suspended that. And then this was the previous one that we voted on. We distributed $2.2 million to the RU account holders and that came out to $50 a credit. And so that should have been seen on, they, I think they started with bills that went out April 1st, where they're about, send them out weekly. So I haven't got mine yet, but I think when I go home and get my next bill, I should get. So that was already done before the meeting. And then in the meeting, what they did, they did a number of things. The first thing they did was they, they deferred the, the hotel tax. They call it the TOT, which is transient occupancy tax.
Okay.
And that's something that the hotel people charge all the guests and visitors. And that, well, they actually didn't, they deferred it. So they said, they're supposed to pay it every month essentially for the month behind. And they said, you can wait and not pay for a couple of months and then we'll let you do it later to increase the cash flow for the hotel people.
Yeah. The state did a similar thing with the income tax. It was sort of calling it like a bridge loan. Like, hey, if you've collected income debt or sales tax that you're supposed to give to the state, you hold on to it, use it to pay your rent for a couple of months. A year from now, give us that sales tax back. Consider it like a bridge loan, kind of the same.
That's, that's essentially what it is. Um, they'll, let's see, they modified the cares program. So the, the cares program is for, um, low income families.
Okay.
And it's paid for, I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's a state law. And I believe that there's a, there's an item on your utility bill where you contribute to the cares program and that it's redistributed by the utility according to guidelines that the, the people have to meet, the low income people have to meet that. Um, and I believe that they, let's see, they modified it, modified the guidelines and it's going to cost a million and a half dollars. I think, I think what they do is if you're eligible for the cares program, there's a, a minimum amount that you pay for a certain level of rate, which is lower than the average person pays. And then if you, if you use more, you pay more, but you pay less than a regular, somebody who's not in the program.
Okay.
And I think in addition to that, he said that there, they give, once a year, they give a $300 credit in addition to the lower rates. And so this is an advance on the credit that they're going to give to them and give it to them now, instead of spreading it out over whatever time it is. Um, that's a million and a half dollars.
Okay.
Change the utility amortization program guidelines. So if you're behind on your utility bill, then it's, it's like being behind on your credit card bill, although utility is probably a little bit nicer because it's real people in Reading as opposed to a phone somewhere, but they let you.
15% interest. They only charge 3% or something.
Well, yeah. The other thing they let you do is, is they talk about how long you can pay it out over time. And I think they've agreed to extend it up all up to 24 months to help you if you get behind and you know, you owe a thousand dollars or $200, whatever it is. And they'll say, well, you spend $20 a month for 20 months or whatever to get your payback.
Yeah. So that's, that's, it's another. Pay would be a little smaller.
Bridge loan, exactly.
Yeah.
They refunded the utility deposits for $3.4 million. So that, a deposit is something you pay if you're a new customer. If you don't want, uh, your, if you don't want to give your social security number, currently you can just pay a deposit. You don't want a credit check run.
I think I'd read that this was also for businesses. Do businesses also have to put down a deposit? And was this something?
Yes. If you're a new, if you're a new customer, they want something from a previous utility to show that you've actually had a utility account before and, and run it. And so that's, that's a direct refund of money they already have. So that wouldn't come from the cap and trade thing, um, directly.
RU giving you some of your deposit back.
Giving your money back.
Yeah. It said $800 of your credit of your deposit you can get back now.
Uh, yeah. And the deposit amounts are different, I think, for each person.
Okay.
It, I did ask at the meeting, what if I came in tomorrow as a new customer? Will I have to pay a deposit? Or do I get a, get a wave? Cause everybody else got waved. And they looked around for a little bit and they said, no, if you're a new customer, you have to pay a deposit. Which seemed a little incongruous, but whatever. It's, it's still giving money back to people that have already put it up.
Yeah.
Which is important and a thing to go do. So that's a recap, it's $3.4 million. Additional cap and trade distribution, nine million. So that's from cap and trade funds or greenhouse gas funds that they had accumulated in their budget. And I don't know if they were unallocated or not. We had in the past, we had allocated some of that money for, let's see, what was, they had one program that they wanted you to convert, see if I'm trying to get it right. They want you to convert a gas heater to an electric heater. And they had some argument that the electric heater was more energy efficient. And so they were taking, yeah, I kind of rolled my eyes too, but it didn't sound like that much money, but whatever. And I think we allocated $4 million as the council to that, and that came from cap and trade funds. And I think then we've, I don't know how successful that program was. I think we've now reallocated that to part of these programs here.
For whatever it's worth.
And then they had, uh, utility grant program for small businesses, $600,000 that they have to come back with some guidelines for it. And I think that was CBDG money. I think it was community development block grant money that they had available.
Okay.
Which they're allowed to use for that. And then the big one is $20 million elect local economic stimulus package. And, and what that is, that's going to have to come back to the council for more fleshing out to be more specific. But the gist of it is, three or four meetings ago, they presented, um, a comprehensive energy efficiency plan for all of the city's buildings. Everything they own, all the power they use, every, you name it, soup to nuts. And they had a consultant come in and give a, you know, report and this, what you need. And then they had some estimates for costs. And that was, we'd allocated some money to that. And I think we allocated some more money to it. And part of the idea is that they will break the projects down into small jobs, not like $10, but small jobs where local contractors can bid on them. So you can provide work for the local community. And it's essentially to make the city and its buildings more energy efficient.
Okay. So you just go building by building for windows or for, um,
Yeah.
solar panels or whatever else.
New air conditioning or weather stripping or new different lighting or, yeah, all the stuff to make it more energy efficient. And then the, the goal or the theory is that that will save some money in the general fund that's being used right now that for, because you'll have spent less on your utility usage and less on your energy.
So going back to number six, the utility, um, grant program for small businesses, how would a small business go about applying for that money? Is there an application process? Who would that go through? Says it's only 600,000 for that, the utility grant program for small businesses.
Look here and see, um, the money comes from HUD. It goes to the community, which is a federal agency, goes to community development block grant. Due to the federal cares act. So I guess the federal cares act gave additional 447,000. And then there's another 150,000, which puts 600 total. Let me just look in here to see. It's, uh, funding toward eligible small business utility payments for those most in need or unable to receive federal assistance or grants. If approved, staff will present the program and the amount available as part of a required public hearing to prove this funding. I'm not sure I, that it's been decided how you apply for it, or who gets it, or what the criteria is. I don't, as far as I know right now, they haven't worked that out yet, but they will work it out and come back.
Okay. So if people are interested, they should pay attention to the next city council meeting. And that may be the, one of the next things that comes up on your.
The next meeting or the meeting after, yeah, we meet, oh, just in case people don't know, we meet the first and third Tuesdays of every month. Except the first Tuesday in January, we don't meet because that's usually around the holidays. And the first Tuesday in July, we don't meet, which allows people to take a couple of weeks off for vacation or July 4th with their kids or something like that. Otherwise, that's when we meet. And you can go to the city's website and it'll show you when the meetings are.
Okay. And it also now that you're, I believe you guys are meeting virtually now, correct?
We are.
So how would they, how would somebody go about viewing one of the meetings now that they're virtual?
So the meetings are, the meetings are broadcast live with a five or 10 second delay. So if you go to the city's website and go to the button that says city council and agendas, there'll be a, and you go right before the meeting starts, there'll be a button that says video. You can push that button and you can watch the meeting live on the video. In addition, I think that the community access channel, see, is it CSAC or C? Mike Flanagan. There's a community access channel that's, that's running in on one of the cable stations. I don't know which one it is. It also posted. And then what they do for, for comments is, is we take emails and there's a special email address. And then after each, up till the time that they call each item. So you can email in before, you have to look at the agenda. And then you'd email in before. And then after we have the item presented, we wait three minutes and you have another three minutes if you want to email something in. And then we all check our emails to see if there's any comments that have come in for us to consider that we want to look at or say anything about that. Um, it's, it's interesting. We had a, um, a discussion, because I mean, I'm big on transparency and being open. And the city council is a big chamber. And you look at Donald Trump and his press conferences, and that's a little tiny press room. And they've got people in there that are six feet apart with marked off. So I said, well, when they came up with guidelines for, to follow, how about if we let every other row or something, there ought to be a way for people to come in if they want and watch the meeting live. It's a big room. And they said, no, we're going to let them participate otherwise, but not them come in live. So they can still participate.
Yeah.
Hopefully that won't last forever. Hopefully it won't last forever.
I know that, that was one of the things my wife was concerned about was, uh, you know, the, I think there was a, hey, a story in the searchlight recently that it's, people are concerned that they don't see a whole lot of masks wearing out there and that people aren't necessarily all that close, aren't necessarily following the six feet apart rules. And what are your thoughts on that? Or have you, are you aware of any of that?
I look at it and I, and I, so when it first started, I, one of the questions I would ask people, I said, how's it going to end? That's the lawyer in me. When you look at it, you go, okay, so we, we started down this road and I get why we started down the road. How's it going to end? It's like, if you go to war, you go, what's your goal? Or any kind of plan you have, you go, what, what's the goal? And how do we get there? And then how do we know when we're there? So we're done with whatever we're doing. And that's always been a, um, a conundrum, so to speak. And I think that looking at it, it's going to wind up being each individual's going to have to decide what he or she is willing to take for risk. So I'm 66 years old and I had a serious heart operation last year. So I'm at higher risk than you probably, or than my 30 year old son. Am I going to wear a mask when I go out? Probably. Will I go to a big concert? No, I'm too old. I don't want to hang around all those people. But, so each person's going to have to decide, but do I think that it should stay forever in a lockdown position? No, I don't think so. I think it's, it's not human nature to go and do that. I mean, you have a risk, you'll get hit by a car. You have a risk, you'll get hit by an airplane. You have a risk, you'll die from something. And you just have to decide individually what risk you're willing to go and take. Now, the part about the testing, they want to do this and they want more statistics. I get it. And the more statistics you have, the better information people will have to decide their risk level.
Right.
But, but there are some people now who've said, I'm, my risk level for me personally is that I want to go up my business. I'll wear a mask. I'll, I'll do what's common sense or what's supposed to do, but I, but I'm willing to go accept that risk. There's others who say, no, you shouldn't take that risk. Or what about the risks that you'll transmit it to somebody else?
Right. That's the reason that I, me and my family are more staying home, right? We're, we're pretty low risk, but the reality is if I get it, there's going to be a couple of weeks where I don't know that I have it. I could pass it on to other people, you know, I could touch a door going into a store and leave some COVID-19 on that. The person behind me is older and, you know, they could get it and bring it back to a nursing home. And then, you know, so there's, you know, I don't have to go out. It's not a, it's not a necessity really at this point. So it is, it is better for me to stay home, not necessarily for my own family, but because I don't want to be the person who inadvertently transmits it to a nursing home or inadvertently transmits it to hospital staff or, or, you know, people who can't, people who are at higher risk and would have bigger.
You don't want to transmit it to anybody. In, you know, reality, you don't want to transmit it to anybody.
Well, of course, but the, you know, those, those are the people that I'm more worried about is when there's, you know, a, going to, a much higher potential of long-term impacts to those folks rather than, you know, transmit it to somebody who's, you know, 20 and relatively healthy and may not even know it. But, you know, you're right. Ideally, I don't want to transmit it to anybody at any time. I want to transmit to my own family or anybody else. So.
And I wouldn't want to either. No, I wouldn't want to either. That would, that would make you feel terrible if you'd transmit it to somebody that, where you didn't have to.
Yeah. And I, I also know the reality is I wouldn't know. And that's why I do hope that we get more testing and that, and that the antibody tests that are coming out of, you know, that folks can go and say, well, was I exposed to it and I wasn't aware of it? So we can get an idea of how many people in Reading, what percentage of our population has already been exposed or, you know, or are we ripe for a, you know, an infection because nobody's been exposed? I think that's some good numbers to know before we start opening all of our public space.
No, I, I, I don't necessarily disagree with you. It's, and it's an individual basis. I mean, somebody like CR Gibbs or one of the restaurants, he says, well, I've set my restaurant up so the tables are six feet apart. And I proposed this and I proposed this, and I don't know how much it did to his capacity, but I'm sure it cut at least in half, maybe more. And at some point, if he says, well, I'm doing this, I'm following the rules, I'm asking people to wear masks. I'm not forcing them to come in. If they don't want to, if, if you don't want to go out, you don't have to go out. Should that restaurant be allowed to open? And my gut reaction is probably. But I, there's two sides to it and there, there isn't an easy answer.
No, there definitely isn't.
If it was, we wouldn't be talking about it.
I know. And it would be a lot nicer if there was a lot of testing, you know, if people had easier access to testing, you know, if, you know, anybody who thinks they might've been exposed could quickly and easily go and get a test and find out if they're, you know, if they have it or they don't. I think that would definitely make it easier to be fact-based when you decide if you're going to open or not.
No, I, and I agree with you. The more facts you have, the better. It's just, but it, it's a hard, I'm glad I'm not the president or the governor. I, I do think that the, the model that the federal government followed where they said, we're here to help, but it's really up to each state, that I personally like. And I think the state should follow the model of it's up to each county. Because here's just one example, the federal guideline, I think, says if, if your rate of infection or mortality or whatever, if the number of cases you see go, start to go down for 14 days and, and you can tell your slope is going down, then that's a good sign. And that's one of the things to move you to the next stage or put you in a certain stage or whatever it is. Well, Chastity County has 30 total. And we, so we have zero some days and we have one some days and we have two some days. And then we have to go back to zero again. So that particular guideline doesn't seem to be relevant to Shasta County. I'm not sure how you, because the numbers are so low anyway. Now, there are other guidelines that, that you should follow with a mask or with other things. So that's why I say it should be on an individual basis. And clearly, Santa Clara County, San Mateo County, San Francisco County, the Bay Area, Oakland, I mean, all that, they, they have different situations than Siskiyou, Tahima, Chastity, Modoc, Trinity and Hayford. And I just think on a, more on a local level, they ought to give a little more discretion to do what they want to go do.
We shall see. They just asked if, uh, you know, those counties, some, there were six counties, I believe, that there was a letter to the governor asking if they could reopen those six counties. Chastity wasn't one, but it was.
I'd be in favor of a letter from the city to do that. Yeah. I'd be in favor of a letter from the city to do it and say, this is what we want to go do. I don't know if the whole council would agree with it or not. It hasn't come up yet. And, um, I mean, technically it's, it's from the counties because it's the county health department. And that's, that's the one who's running the show, not the city. City doesn't have a health department. So in, in that division of labor, so to speak, or, or, you know, organizational chart, that's really who it should come from. But I don't think it's, have the city send something.
Have you talked to the county health folks to see what their opinion is or, you know, how safe they feel like it is right now? And whether or not they're able to do the level of testing that they think they would need to do to, to feel safe?
Um, I haven't talked to them directly. I think what I know is what I've seen in the papers and it ranges from, we need more tests and more testing ability. And I think they just said, Chastity Community Health Center has testing or they're doing it. I know Mercy got it first. And then Chastity Community Health, and I'm not sure. And then the other one is, you know, they want to follow this, the state guidelines and they, you know, that's an interesting legal question as to how effective that can be or not effective and, and how much power they have and how much power they don't have. And that isn't, that still doesn't solve the question that every person has to decide which on his or her own level, which is what's the risk level I'm wanting to go take? And, and what's, you know, what should the public policy be with respect to me taking that level of risk or not? So. But I, I think the county's trying, I think, I think everybody's trying to do what he or she thinks is in the best interest of the community. I don't think anybody's trying to sabotage anything or extend it any longer than they want to have to go and extend it.
Oh, true. But it's, it definitely, I think it definitely affects people's opinion, whether or not their livelihood is being affected, right? So CR Gibbs is going to be much more likely to err on the side of opening sooner because their income depends on it. And folks that are in our situation that are, you know, more able to stay home and continue their incomes, it's much easier to err on the side of, of protecting others. So.
Human nature. I, I agree a thousand percent. I'm a, I'm a fiscal conservative and I've always been concerned about the deficit. And the president is conservative in many ways, but spending doesn't seem to be one of them. And, uh, that's, that's another more interesting long-term question is what is this going to do to the deficit? Well, I know it does the deficit, but long-term, what's it going to do to my kids and my grandkids and your kids and your grandkids?
I wonder the same. I wonder the same thing, you know, when you're running a one trillion dollar deficit already, and then you're going to put another three trillion dollars of unfunded spending on top of that. We're looking at at least four trillion dollars of deficit this year alone. And I do wonder, what is that going to do to the economy in the next decade? What's that going to mean for my kids? You know, maybe we should, another trillion dollar deficit going into this.
There's another issue, um, a practical issue. The federal government can print money.
Right.
Now, the more prints, in theory, inflation comes back and your dollars are worth less because there's more of them.
In theory, that has not happened in a long time. I mean, that should have happened back in two thousand and eight, but it didn't.
The state and the local governments can't print money.
Yeah.
The only way they could get money is either get the feds to give it to them or loan it or whatever, or they have to get money from income tax, property tax, transient occupancy tax, sales tax, those kinds of things.
You, you can't pass bonds, right? So you can, either you do have.
You could, you could pass a bond. Or bonds, they could get them. But they can't print them. So at some point, there's the, the pressure to open the economy back up because they need money.
Right.
Is going to have to weigh on the states. They can't just say forever and ever, we want it to be perfect. I mean, you could say it, but it's not good for your fiscal health.
Right.
At all. And not even counting your pension obligations and all the other things that you, you promised to do. So it's an interesting dynamic when you look at the money part of it. They won't, they don't talk about it because it's not exciting and that, you know, you can't really yell about it. You know, I'm sure they're thinking about, what do we do? Just like you said at the beginning, when the sales tax goes down and the property taxes go down, or you defer them. Right? When you defer them, that means you're going to defer the payments to the city. And so the city one month is going to be, you know, a little bit less.
Right.
And what do they do? And what do you do if you don't have a utility that you can borrow money from?
Well, right. That's why I do think that there's an appropriate discussion to be had at the federal level of whether or not the federal government should be providing some relief to states and cities. And the idea that that is unconscionable to even discuss that and to even talk about putting that into a stimulus bill, I feel goes far beyond what's an appropriate level of, of discussion. It's not unconscionable. It's a real debate to have.
And I've always thought, you know, to be transparent to the people, we're going to give money for, if you want to give money for, let's just say, hospitals and schools have two bills. One, we're going to give money for hospitals. You know, the hospitals that we're going to give the money to. And yes or no? We're going to give money to schools, yes or no? And it would make it a lot easier for people to see how you voted, why you voted. You know, and I don't see it would take that much more time, but whatever. I'm not running Congress.
Very true. And we, our country to some extent was built on compromise and it was set up so that people would have to compromise.
Yeah.
Putting, putting multiple things into one bill sometimes is the way of making people compromise and do some things to different people. So.
It is.
There's pros and cons. I agree with you though. Things have gotten way too complicated and, you know, when you've got multi thousand pages in a single bill, oh, that becomes way too hard to understand. So, and we're certainly not going to solve it today.
I'm a lawyer and I can't understand it half the time we start reading it, let alone the average person just rolls their eyes.
Yes, I, I've tried a couple of times. It's definitely over my head. So. But I definitely want to thank you for taking the time to talk about these things and thank you for.
You're welcome.
The council. Um, I appreciate that, uh, that folks are getting some relief in these difficult times and like the, uh, the article had mentioned, we don't really need the money, but we will be sure to try to spend it locally. I know that there's some local grocery stores that are doing delivery now. So we will probably spend our extra two hundred dollars getting groceries from some of our local vendors to try to keep the money local and to try to help the people who are here and working.
Well, that, that's the goal of the whole program. And to the extent anybody can, we'd appreciate it if, if you don't need the two hundred or two fifty and you want to give a contribution to law enforcement or to a local business or to, you know, anybody else you want to. It's obviously your money and your choice, but try to keep it local. And, uh, yeah, we appreciate that very much.
Well, yeah, thank you very much. And our local food banks, I'm sure are looking for donations right now too. So that's another good place to, to donate some money. If you happen to have it, you're in a good, good place.
Yes, it is. Well, thank you very much for having me and I enjoyed it.
Thank you very much. And, uh, hopefully we'll talk again sometime.
Okay.